Today is the City Council Finance Subcommittee, October 14th, 6:00 PM here in Payson. First item of business is minutes. We have several minutes.
We'll provide minutes for the 27th to 10th, the 24th I O.
Okay. Councilor Riss said the next meeting is going to provide minutes from the 27th and the 10th.
24th.
Excuse me, the 24th and the 20th.
It's not listed here, but it is one of the...
Right. May 27th, then not listed as June 24th. Those are Councilor Riss will put an hour for those. I took the minutes on the 10th of June and August 12th, which I'll provide at the next meeting. And we already have Councilor Riss, May 26th meeting minutes. We have the minutes.
I did disseminate the minutes.
He didn't disseminate the minutes, but I don't think we ever approve them. We can take that at the next meeting, too. That way you'll have it, he has to... Mayor's communication.
I'm all set.
Mayor's all set. Public speak, anyone here? Public. New business, I'd like to go out of order. I know Laurie Stewart's here.
Oh, good.
Laurie Stewart's here from the assessors, and I wanted to, you know, have a pleasant first experience here.
We're not as mean as we seem to be in the interviews.
We want Laurie back tomorrow.
Yeah, we're going to jump to the assessors first, because Joe's got several items, and hopefully the assessors...
Are we...
Oh, I will sign the sheet. Oh, thank you, Laurie.
Well, let's talk about people. What do you want to do with them?
Yeah, again, what we usually do is the assessor provides us with the, you know, what their recommendations are. I'm sure the board, and I see the boards here are represented today, provides us with this information, and then we generally have any questions, we can ask. If there's questions people have now, because generally we break it down a little bit, and I don't know if it's in your business and percent of business, I think is, we do have on the second page, looks like...
There's also the, there's a chart that's on one of the pages that goes through it, and it's percentage-wise and dollar-wise.
Is that just one that says disposed?
Nope.
Nope?
This here.
Too many pages.
This one?
There we go.
There.
Minimum residential factor computation?
Yep. Yep.
And did the board already vote? Let's go back to the first page.
First page, it looks like everybody's...
This is your vote that you, um, you voted today?
This morning.
Must have been today, because it's, actually, the date is today. Okay. I mean, I don't know if the councilors have questions now that they want to ask the assessor, or, I mean, anyway, we have to have a public hearing on this. So, I mean, I certainly have no problem setting the public hearing at the next council meeting. We will have one subcommittee meeting probably between, so we can, if you have other questions, we can get the, you know, I don't want to necessarily bring the assessor back in or the board back in, but certainly any questions tonight, and if we have questions, we can certainly ask them to come back or send them the questions before the meeting.
I have two questions.
Sure.
Peter. Single tax rate, no open space discount, no residential exemption, no small commercial exemptions. These have been constant for years.
Yes.
Was there ever a debate in your meeting to change anything? Was there any discussion about it?
Not really, because of the size. And, you know, this is a little different what Laurie's put in here than has been in the past, but it shows where our size is, you know, in the percentage-wise.
Size of the community.
Size of the community, and what, the 87% of it is residential, and 13 of it is commercial, industrial, and personal property. You know, we're not in a large situation, you know, for example, for the commercial aspect of it, you know, such as Holyoke, you know, they have to double, double whatever the residential is, and everything. You know, there's a lot of larger industry there.
So, to change, to have two rates for business or commercial and residential?
Right.
Doesn't make sense, because it's only 6% or 7% of the total.
Right. If it was 25% or greater in that respect, it would be. The small business exemption, we have a lot of small businesses in town, and it would be great to help them, but the small businesses don't own the property.
Okay.
The landlord would get the benefit, not the small business. So, it really doesn't help the small business.
So, if you're renting a space, it's going to be the landlord renting to that space?
Exactly. Yeah, you've got three employees, whatever, so you qualify, but you don't get the benefit.
I want to make it clear to everybody in the room, I wasn't ever suggesting we change anything.
No.
I just know that we kind of glance over this every year.
Right.
And now I've got good reasons, if someone asks, why don't we have two rates?
This is an excellent review period, Dan. You know, the other thing about the chapter land, it's considered commercial property. So, if we did change that, it was nullified. You know, there's no savings. And the open space, we don't have it. You know, we don't tax it, so...
Okay. What is open space, Peter? What would be, in others, what would be...
Well, we don't have any taxes on it. The open space is, what, non-developable?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything that's not in chapter land, or that it's not preserved somehow, is some cities classify it as open space, rather than just vacant land.
So, it could be developable land, but it's...
Well...
Then it would be classified open space.
Right. It's, you know, there's like land that would be like the right-of-way, you know, type of stuff, things that we have, the Prescott Trust stuff.
Yeah.
The thing that comes down from Park Hill Orchards through, you know, down to West Street, that the city, you know, was involved with, and anything that's in chapter. Anything that's in chapter.
But this, I'll go ahead.
I was just going to ask, I secondly, the question. You're coming from a smaller community, but is anything different for you on what we normally do, all of these exemptions and different rates? You expected them, and you certainly agree with them.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely, yeah. Yeah, no, it's pretty much a process, like Peter said, unless you have a big commercial base.
Unless you have a real balance between commercial...
Yeah.
Okay. So, the open space discount would be, we're taxing people who have developable land, and you're saying this would be a discount, different discount, right?
Yeah, but it would get taken, if you give that discount, then it would get taken up with the residential, because it has to stay within the class. So, if they got the discount, the residential property...
Would have to pay more.
Yes.
They'd have to pick up the slack, so it would actually put a bigger burden on the residential.
Yes.
Yes.
If the councilors...
Do you have a...
Oh, absolutely.
Do you know why open, why chapter land is considered part of the commercial, just as a...
It's a statute. Statutory. That's a statutory decision.
To be in 61A, you have to produce an income. Producing an income...
Makes it commercial, so that's why it falls into the commercial, so if you do have chapter land and you adopt a split rate...
Right.
It's going to be...
It's going to be taxed like the factors.
Certainly, we're not in a position like, Holyoke is in a position to have some captured commercial resources.
There are whole mill districts down there, and, you know, I mean, it makes sense, or West Springfield, or Westfield, you know, because of their base, you know...
Here with 6%, it doesn't make any sense at this point.
Right.
To do a split rate.
Right. Well, at that point, it's not even 6, it's, what is, commercial, industrial?
So, you're 13.
9, 10?
Commercial, industrial, 9, 10, 10%.
Yeah, 6.7%, and then the industrial is 3. The big, the big company is 3%, so, you know.
I don't know if we've ever had a presentation like this before, I compliment you on this, I don't remember.
Not this thorough, I mean, we...
This is very thorough, thank you.
It's different.
I certainly appreciate that.
So, what are our deadlines on this? When do you need this public hearing done for tax purposes or any other reason, Melissa?
Laurie's ready since the factory, I think we're ready on our side, too, so, you know, I mean, I know that Betty wants to get the tax filled out, you know, you have the chance to go through and balance them. Instead of last minute.
So, first meeting in November?
I'll set the, at the next meeting, next week, I'll set a public hearing for, I think it's November 4th, I'm guessing.
The first is on Monday, yes.
Is it the 4th, or is it the 3rd?
Well, the first meeting in November, because we have one more October meeting, right?
Yeah, but we have to...
Right, but at that meeting, I'll set it for the next...
We have to have a council.
So, the public hearing will be the first one in November.
Is it November 4th?
So, I'll set a public hearing next week for, the actual public hearing in front of the full council will be November 4th.
Will you be able to attend, Laurie? And Peter, I know you always go.
Okay.
And I'll leave this, we won't vote on this tonight from the subcommittee, because we'll have another subcommittee meeting in two weeks, and that way, if either councilors have any, or myself have more additional questions, you can go directly to Laurie or Peter and hopefully get the answers, and then we can, if there's anything else, we can approve it in subcommittee next meeting, and then, well, that will... Because, again, I'd like to go through the document, because it is thorough, and I don't want to take the time to read it all now.
No. And as Dan picked up, it is a little different than it has been in the past, and I think it's a little more clear of what's happening, and shows some other options that weren't shown in the past, and that's, that's on Laurie.
I think it's a lot easier to follow.
Yeah, it seems, I just might just flip it through it quickly.
It was not as complex.
A little more commentary.
Thank you.
Okay, Laurie, that's it. As I said, if any councilors certainly might contact you over the next couple of weeks with questions or whatever, and hopefully, November 4th, we'll have the full meeting. You won't have to come back to the next subcommittee meeting unless, you know, councilors have questions that they feel they need to bring you or Peter back, so, okay?
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hope you enjoy your job.
Oh, yeah, thanks. Thanks for bothering me up here.
Thanks for the time.
Okay, Peter. Bye-bye. Well, now we have to deal with Joe. He's such a hard guy.
So, our first item is a pickup truck of $30,000.
Right.
Which, Joe, I guess you can explain, this looks like it's a water, public works vehicle, capital funding for replacement, Water Division. That's why it's coming out of Enterprise?
Yeah.
And you're replacing Unit 41, but that's going to stay with the department. Is this an extra vehicle, or...
Well, what will happen is, Unit 41 now is a 2006, got 120,000 miles on it, and it's a frontline service vehicle. And if we continue using it as a frontline service vehicle, maybe get one more year out of it, then it's going to be dead. But if we buy another vehicle, we can move that one down to a secondary role, and have it have it for another three, four years or so. And in the meantime, we can get rid of one of the police cruisers that are down there, move it back to, say, the 50 patients for the inspector use. So, we're kind of doing the vehicle shuffle here.
So, trading it in, isn't it?
No.
Well, it's valuable to us, right? And if I may talk on that issue, it's, Laurie just left, but we have a real issue here for vehicles, because, as you know, you know, we, you know, but we have, you know, our assessor's office, data collector needs a vehicle to do the data collection every day. Building inspector's office, two inspectors in there, need a vehicle to do their inspections. What they've been doing is borrowing the pilot that is supposed to be for my use, which I've been sharing with them for many years, but it also is to be able to be used for, well, it's supposed to be used for any meetings, and I also like to share it with all the departments, you know, if any of us have to go to Boston for the day. So, that, the Honda pilot that we have, first of all, if I need it, I have to make a reservation like a month ahead of time, and so...
Even though it's your car?
Yeah. So, we have, you know, we have a real shortage and, you know, and a scheduling problem, so when Joe, obviously, as you can see, every vehicle we have gets, you know, if it's of any use at all, gets recycled and sent down and down and down, and at the end of the crop, that's what we're getting. So, but we're happy to have it, because, think of it, it only goes, what our inspectors are doing, they might get it from here to your house, here to your house, or then back to your house, so it's not getting the use that, you know, the heavy-duty use that it would get, but in the meantime, it's saving our other vehicles, and saving our vehicles for the need.
Well, we have two police cruisers now, all of these cruisers, and I have to say, they're kind of bulletproof.
They keep on...
They keep on going. So, if, again, if we take them out of the role that we're usually, down in the water department, and bring them here, again, it's in a lesser role, so they take it out, take their light on a little bit further, and also it'll allow for a little more flexibility here, where they have to juggle people around and move people around.
I have a stupid question. We paint these, right? They don't say police on them?
No.
They're actually white.
Did, we used, we used to have a cruiser here that the assessor's office was, right?
Yes, we did. Exactly. You've been here a little, sometime, if you know that.
I remember that.
And we took that off the road when somebody steered one way and the vehicle went the other, and that literally just about came off the frame, right, Joe? So, but they used that for years, you know, and we just don't have anything like that. And, you know, as you know, we utilize anything we have. So, it's very valuable to us, and, you know, I'm actually glad they gone, they're left, because they don't know about this, so they're going to be really excited, they think that they're going to... And again, they're not getting a vehicle per person, this is a vehicle to basically share with two people in the assessor's office, because Laurie goes out and does inspections. You have, the data collector goes out and does the inspections. I have a local inspector and a building, a building commissioner, so that's four people. That's just four people in just those two departments, but also, you know, we need vehicles for our other departments to be using.
Okay. Question, if there wasn't worth of vehicle, and there isn't a vehicle, mileage?
Well, it's by law, we have to pay mileage, of course.
What's the current rate?
50 cents. But they don't want to use their vehicles for that, and, you know, you can't blame them, especially people that have been able to get, you know, they're pretty, pretty much upset by it, especially people that, you know, spot a new vehicle. They don't feel like putting their miles on that, you know, 50 cents.
Especially if it's leased.
Exactly. But it's true.
A lot of people do.
And what's happening is, we have one vehicle that is split in so many different ways. You know, I went, wanted to go to, well, I did go, to MSBA with the superintendent and Melissa. We had to reserve the vehicle two weeks ahead of time. That's the only time I even will use it. So, all the, any meetings I go to, anything I do, I use my own vehicle, other than if I'm going to Boston. And same thing with, with your department, Jessica's department, our auditor, our HR director, you know, so...
You need more than one vehicle down there.
Well...
I mean, I'm saying, you need two more besides yours.
I know. I know. But I think this will be a pleasant surprise for them, I think they'll be extremely happy. They don't know about it.
I'm certainly good for this.
This one, I'm not, the only thing I would, and this isn't really just with this one, but with the other two, one thing I'd like to see, Joe, and again, I know it puts extra, it shouldn't be too much, though, is with the, maybe it's a little my own, but with, between the water department, the sewer department, the highway department, I guess, if we could get an inventory, maybe at the next meeting or before we approve these, for what your vehicles are, I know, like, a lot of times...
I have the fleet schedule by office.
Okay, if we could get that, because I know, like, the police always come in and they say, we got this, this, and this, with this many miles, and just so that we have it, like, when we're talking, you know, Unit 41 going in, Unit 42, I get, it would just be nice to be able to refer to.
Well, do you want the whole fleet schedule, or do you just want the DP, you know, like, when it pertains to the vehicle? Because the fleet is kept in my...
To be able to understand.
I think the whole fleet schedule would be good, because I know we transfer them around, like, we took, when we got Joe a new car, we got that, gave it to the meter, or the water meter meters, and kind of keep it, so if you could provide that, Mayor, at the next meeting.
That'd be, I'll put a note, but yeah, I'd be happy to.
I just think it would be easier when we're sitting here talking about vehicles that...
I'll give you a copy, actually, what I'll do, I'll make a note tomorrow, and I'll just put a copy of the fleet schedule in all the councilor's box.
Sure.
Or, you know, or do you just want it for finance?
Well, you know, I mean, all the councilors can have.
Do you? Yeah, I mean, it's a waste if they don't want it, but, you know, obviously, finance does.
Why don't you just start with the finance, and I'll provide it for them if they have it?
Right. I'd be happy to do it.
I don't see any reason not to vote on this, though.
Well, we gotta, again, we gotta set a public hearing, so we can keep them all open if we have questions, and then, again, I mean, I don't have a problem with this, I don't have a problem with this one.
I don't have any questions on any of these, it's just a matter of explanation. As usual, Joe gives a pretty good explanation. I mean, I don't disagree with having the fleet schedule.
Right.
You have an understanding of the total picture, that's great.
The fleet schedule is not going to tell, it's going to tell you the make, model, VIN number, it's not going to tell you how many miles are on it, but it's broken down by department.
It'll tell you the year.
It'll tell you, right, the make, model, the year, the VIN number, and what department it broke down by.
How hard is it to get the miles on octobos?
I think that's what they want. I can get the miles on mine fairly easily.
Well, that's what I'm saying, just while we're going through them, just so that, you know, we've got it, so, I mean, I know, everyone, you always provide them, Joe, when you...
Years, your department.
My department.
You always provide them when you're coming for a vehicle, which, it would be nice to kind of just watch, again, how it's, how the rest of the fleet is, or what else you got.
Well, can I move that we approve this?
JP started to comment about whether he wanted to, and again, it's up to you, JP, if you...
Well, if we're not going to deal with it until the next meeting, until the next full council.
Your public hearing, you have to schedule a public hearing.
Yeah, I'll definitely schedule a public hearing.
Your first meeting in November, there.
So, we can leave these open for other questions?
I have no problem leaving it open.
Because we got all three of them, and we'll leave them open at...
I think that would give us some additional information.
In that way, if we have questions, that Joe, we haven't really made a full final. I mean, I don't see where these are going to be a problem, it's just a matter of getting a full explanation. I mean, I don't have any more, I don't, anyone have any more questions on this one, this $30,000, at this time? Okay, moving on to the 46-2 replacement. This one's a little more confusing, because I think it's more for the motor repair, Joe, and some goes back, some is being funded by water and sewer, because that's part of there, like we do with the assessors or the trade group.
Yeah, it's part of, we use the same, we use the same formula in funding this one that we do with the other assets. And this vehicle is used by the motor repair division to move around and go out, you know, we get a call, go out and repair, put equipment out on the road, or go pick up parts or something like this. And the idea here was, is to replace this vehicle, and this vehicle's a 2002, and it's, so we got about 70,000, so it's a pretty decent, two-wheel drive vehicle. But the idea is to send it to the Parks and Rec, because I understand Parks and Rec is looking for a two-wheel drive vehicle.
They're in desperate need, it needed one last year, they're in desperate need of a vehicle.
So, this vehicle, the new vehicle would be a four-wheel drive, which would make it a lot easier to go in the middle of the night to repair the snow blower or snow plow that's been broke down out on, you know, Wonderwood Street, say, to try to fight your way out there with a two-wheel drive. The one, Unit 25, we actually bought that used, and it was something that, well, we needed something at the time, but this is a pretty good price, we bought it, we made it work, but a four-wheel drive and the toolbox is set up on it is actually what the mechanics need. And in the meantime, this gets reassigned to another division or another, another department that can use something exactly like this.
I noticed on the specs, there's a 3,000-hour gate lift, is that, so they pick heavy, I assume it's, is that like hydraulic, that thing that drops down?
Right. That's a hydraulically operated tailgate, so that can come down to the ground, they can roll some parts on there or something and pick it up, put it in the bed.
Is that one on that current vehicle?
No, it's not.
So, that's another, would help them?
That's an addition, so if you're out in the road and you've got to pick up something, put it on the truck, you've got to get it, now you've got to get a loader out there to pick it up and bring it on the trucks, whereas this way...
So, in the past, you had to use a loader to put it onto Unit 25?
Right.
So, this is an obvious improvement, and it leads to efficiency in the operation.
Absolutely.
Because now you can probably do this with one or two guys, and now three guys, bring a loader from someplace else.
Right.
No, that's, again, I think that's...
The house parking, right?
Right. No, I, again, those were the, you come up with these questions, because, I mean, again, you know the public, when they see 50, close to $50,000 for a truck, they're going to be saying, what are we getting? And then when you, that's why I assume that's what it's for, and it makes sense, I mean, it makes sense, you have a lift. JP, you have any?
Just a thought about the fleet, and understanding the fleet, and how the charges are broken up for general fund, sewer, and water. So, if we had...
That's a complicated form alone, that the auditor spends a lot of time on, and that's the way things are budgeted also. So, that is the percentage formula of how things are used.
Because this isn't a dedicated vehicle to just highway.
No.
It's a vehicle that's going to be used by all the divisions, because motor repair has to go to fix any vehicle in any of your divisions, whether it's wastewater, water...
Water, highway...
Highway.
Police.
Police.
Fire.
Oh, really?
So, any city vehicle they go, if they can, if it's something they're near...
That makes sense, though. So, that's why you charge it the way you do.
Right.
When you say general fund, is, that's not Enterprise, that's our, the general fund.
Our free cash.
And you're using free cash?
It's a city.
Oh, this lends me to it. Did we get certified for free cash?
Yes. That's why you'll see these are out of free cash.
I know, I didn't know what was the certification.
Well, I'll just give you a copy, so you'll have it. I'll grow, I'll grow cotton for you, so, it's like 90s, under a million, 96765, whatever. I'll just grab you a copy, so you have it.
Okay, I like that you did it. Sorry, I didn't realize, I thought it was always certified in November for some reason, I don't know.
Well, Val does her reporting as early as it's ready.
And therefore, they get back to us earlier?
Well, no, they get back to you, if you don't do it until November, you're not going to hear until December, but, you know, Val likes to, once she knows there's nothing else going to come in, she waits for, you know, grant reimbursements to come in, but once she realizes they're not going to come in on time, then she just goes ahead and does it.
Okay. I like the efficient use of the vehicle. Do you want to hold this one?
Yeah, again, we'll hold this one, in case we have any other questions, again, only because there's a lot of specs here, and, but, just before we get into the specs, it's not like you, let me just go through, like, if you said you wanted no power locks and power doors, I'm just not saying you do or don't, certainly the power doors, that Certainly the power doors, that'd make sense, because you... But these are packages, so you can't like necessarily, I noticed you took like the CD player out, there was a CD player.
You got forty-two bucks for it, that was good.
But you can't necessarily take all these items out.
No, you, you, you can't. What they do is they buy these things as a fleet.
Hundreds of them.
Under, you know, these are the specs, Liberty Chevrolet might buy fifty of them, and then these are the specs that they buy. This is what's included in every one of these. So they got a better deal on them, because they're buying fifty of them, so we get a better deal on them too. But if you want to add something to it, they'll always add it to it, but that's the basic spec.
Because these are...
Where did you see that they removed it?
These are the bids contracts.
The very last page, very back.
This is one of the top of the bids, right?
Does say like, delete CD player, forty-two dollars.
Poor guys, they gotta listen to the radio.
But, you know, I just, I'm sure you already know that, and these are, these are bids.
Bids, right.
So they have the contract.
Yes, so I figured they were packaged.
Pull out the power locks, whatever.
It would cost more.
No, I wasn't suggesting we pull it out, I was just saying, do we have the option to do that? I believe going through these, in the feds, we haven't really.
I think you have the option of looking at a different package.
You could look at a different...
And the other vehicles that may be offered.
Through the same program or another program?
This is the way they're...
Is Liberty the only program?
No, you can just go through MHQ with a Ford, these happen to be Chevrolet.
Right, so there are other, you could choose another program.
Right.
You can choose another, another make. Now, I think Joe, what Joe's trying to explain to you is this is their bid package. This is the way it comes, if you're looking for the Chevrolet, they get a fleet of these, this is how they go. You know, if you want to go and order your own Chevrolet or vehicle, it would be much more, much more expensive than this, and you would probably, probably could get less options, but it wouldn't just...
Necessarily.
Right, these are bid specific, these are specs specifically for municipalities.
Right, the other two, by, by picking them differently, you might end up waiting three or four months, there's probably even more.
Special.
And these, they have them right there.
This is just an aside, Joe, it seems like most of your vehicles, you tend to buy Chevrolet, and then yet, we get the police in here, and they always go through all the things and say they always want to buy a Ford, and I was just wondering, this is just for my own curiosity, why is it just...
Our pickups, we've had very good luck with them.
Just because you've had them.
Very good luck, for sure. The police cruisers and the explorers...
No, I know they always come in and say they...
They've had good luck with those, so, you know, stick with what you know. It's a type of, it's a different, it's a different origin.
I understand that, Dan, I just wondered why, you know, like, it seems like, well, it's just, you know.
Okay. I tend to buy the same vehicle, once I like them.
And I think, the other thing, Dan, too, the other thing, Dan, too, if you look at, actually, you know, to who they're contacting, like on the top of the, on the top of the, you know, the contract number, it says roofier, but that's Dennis Roofier. So, you know, he takes a huge part, him and Rick, who are the ones that fix the vehicles. They take a huge part in inspecting what they feel the use is, and, you know, they really take a very involved part in it, and what they feel best serves the department, and what they like working on.
Well, plus, I can also see when a car, vehicle gets older, you know, maybe you can pick and pick a little here and put it over here.
Exactly.
Whereas if you're, if you're going across vehicle lines, it makes it a little tougher.
Using a cab, they've done that before, using the...
Use a chassis or whatever. Again, I'm not a mechanic, but use it.
And what first they have in stock, and all of those.
Right.
Okay, so, again, I, again, I'll leave it open, so if councilors between now and the fourth, but I'll set a public hearing, so we'll get that one done. And then, the last one is a forty-seven thousand dollar, another truck.
Right.
For, this one's just for water?
This, this one's in the water department. But what's grinding with this one here is that we have, in wastewater, we had a two thousand and, well, actually nineteen ninety-two Chevy half-ton in water that we purchased used that died on its parts. It's a, we're short one vehicle in, at the wastewater treatment plant. So by replacing this vehicle, the old forty-seven will be transferred down to the wastewater treatment plant with the plow, so that now they can plow their yard down there, and they, and they have a, they have a decent vehicle. Again, it won't receive the same use that, at the wastewater treatment plant, that it does at the water department. So this truck is still in pretty good shape, it's got a hundred fifteen thousand miles on it, but if we send it down to the wastewater treatment plant now, we might get another three or four years on it very easily. So again, it's, it's the vehicle stuff that we do.
And this is gonna be a, with the plow, I assume, is plowing mostly water?
This will be used exclusively...
What do you plow, I guess?
To plow the water pump stations, the water department yard, up to the water tanks, and things like that, that they need access to. Especially during a snowstorm, if they have to get to the pump station during a snowstorm, we're not asking the highway guys to break away from plowing the roads, they've got their own truck where they can go in there and do it.
And then the spring, you just take the plow off and use it?
Take the plow off, that's correct. And we can still pull a trailer with it if we need to pull a skid steer or something.
Again, this is a package.
I have one question on that.
Delete CD player.
No, Joe's not going with those CD players. Is this the one, or are you... Well, my other question was, I noticed, and we can go back a little, that's why we keep them open, the thirty thousand, in this one, you seem to be buying twenty-fifties, and I think the one we just looked at was a twenty-sixteen. I was wondering if there was a reason if there was no twenty-fifteen available, was the twenty-sixteen just as cheap, or...
The, the, the price really doesn't, doesn't change from the fifteen to the sixteen, so it might be the fact that they didn't have, that they didn't have one, and by the time we go to buy it, the twenty-fifteen may not be a twenty-fifteen, maybe a twenty-sixteen, because they don't have the fifteens anymore. But the price, the price...
Keep the price if it's a twenty-sixteen?
They will, they will.
I just happened to notice, I saw one was a twenty-sixteen, the other were twenty-fifties, I didn't know if they ran out of one, because they're, looks somewhat similar, these two.
So assuming council approves these on the fourth of November, how long does it take to get these, Joe?
Uh, we could probably have them within...
Before winter?
Within a month.
That's good, so you get them for December first?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Excellent, excellent. I mean, I'm assuming some of this stuff, especially like the plow, would be died with that.
Yeah.
There's one question, maybe it's on the one we just, the one we dealt with before. It was just a question I had, and I'm sure you'd have an explanation for it on the, it was like spray painting the, like it was a thousand dollars extra to...
No.
No, no, it was like a...
The, the, uh...
Is it this one?
The spray-on bed liner.
No, 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 it wasn't that.
I saw that.
When it was a, like to spray the chassis to the, it was a thousand dollars, I remember that, so I'm looking for...
Not the, was it the safety striping?
Paint utility body.
No, okay, paint utility, yes. Yes, on the second one, Joe, that we just got done. It says, paint utility body to match cab, a thousand dollars.
That's correct, because, because we're not buying...
If we went with two colors, then we...
Well, we're not buying a complete pickup truck here, we're buying a cab and chassis, and then getting a utility body...
I see, that's gonna be important.
That has to go on there, and then that utility body comes through with a primer color.
And they painted the color that it...
Whatever the...
So it's only primed, it's not even painted?
It's not even painted, it's just primed.
So the thousand, the thousand is to paint?
To paint it to match, whether you had a blue truck, a white truck, a black truck, a yellow truck. Yeah.
Just, these are just, these are just questions I see in here. Again, I have no problem with the last one, again, we keep them all open, and if councilors have any questions, I will set a public hearing for all three of them on the fourth, or on the next meeting, next week for the fourth. And if we have any questions next week, or during the week, you can get to Joe or Karen, if it's something Joe doesn't have, you don't have to go back unless you're here.
If it would help, I could be at the meeting next week.
It's two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, I mean, if you, if you're here, I mean, it's...
You always come to the public hearings when it's a public hearing.
He's talking about the review of this.
Yeah, I mean, well, you know, I'll get back to you, Joe, let me see if the councilors...
For his, just for his...
For his thing, absolutely.
If we have questions, we should email him, and then he'll come. I mean, I would think.
That's what I'm saying, if councilors, I mean, I don't want to drag it back.
I would let, you know, and then we could...
Right, if any councilors have questions for you, Joe...
So Dan, I'll let you know if you need to.
Right, if not, you don't have to come, if council, there's no reason to come if we don't have any more questions for you, there's no sense for you to come. But I do appreciate you.
But Joe always goes to the city council, public hearing.
Yeah, he'll be there, definitely the fourth.
Absolutely.
The final item tonight is supplemental appropriation for, looks like we're putting in a twelve-inch cast iron water main under Ferry Street Bridge.
Yeah. We, that Ferry Street Bridge hang underneath it, we have a twelve-inch cast iron water main. And during our inspections, we noticed that some of the bridge hangers are rotting, and in some places, that pipe is sagging a little bit, it's actually dripping. We've gotta repair that, because one of these days, the pipe hangers are just gonna let go, and we're gonna lose that, and we end up shutting down that section, which will severely limit water pressure and volume to sections of town, certain sections of town. So the fact that it's a bridge, you have to hire a structural engineer, because anything to do with a bridge has to go through MAST DOT. MAST DOT won't even look at it unless there's a structural engineer that has looked at it, and the design is from a structural engineer. We couldn't just say, "Hey, let's get some welder in here, and hang some brackets there, we'll put a new pipe, and we go." No, they won't, they won't allow that. So this is just for the design.
Just for the study, or the design.
This payment is just for the design?
That's correct.
So, well, my question is, how serious is this? You're just getting a design now.
Right, right. We're hoping it's gonna hold together for another year, so that we can get...
A year?
Yeah.
But you're saying the pipe is leaking?
It's dripping slowly.
That's scary, too.
It is scary, it is scary.
Do, do you have a estimate, not an estimate, I know that's what the design's for, but I mean, a ballpark of what a project like this would cost?
It could be two hundred fifty thousand.
Wow.
Yeah, it could be two hundred fifty thousand to replace that pipe.
What's the status of the bridge itself?
Well, that's what, that's what the structural engineer is gonna tell us, whether it would be, whether we can, the bridge is solid enough to hang something underneath it, or sometimes you see these pipes that come up out of the ground and along the bridge, and then goes back down, and they're covered with insulation, or they'll tell, the study, the design will tell us, no, we just need to come up over, over it all, and then go back down and leave the bridge alone, but we won't know that till the structural engineer tells us that.
If he goes in and looks at it and says, "You got a serious problem, can you do a stopgap measure on it, if you have to?" I mean, what if the damn thing breaks?
If the thing breaks, we'll have to isolate it, and if...
Somebody's not having any water.
Well...
Water would come in from the other side.
Water would come, water would come in from the other side, but what, what would happen is, you might restrict fire flow. So what we'd have to do is run, is run temporary pipes over the bridge to get that water moving.
So one, my question is, the structural engineer may be able to not only design, but it can give you a condition of current, current status. He'll be able to say, "Look, you gotta really, the rust is just about done here."
Yes, you're right.
So then, therefore, if you know you need to do something, stopgap before you get to final, you'll know right away.
That's right.
And then, you may have to come to us for funding for that, because, to me, this sounds serious, it sounds like something we may have to...
Well, it is, we, we happen to find it during one of our routine inspections, so it was like, oh geez, we didn't notice this.
It would end up being another capital request to me, and that was something I would have put forward.
I tried, I tried to look under there, Joe, but I thought I might end up in Lower Mill Pond, because you're gonna have to get up here and look down, and there was a little debris there, so I think I've gone far enough. Just two questions on, and this may be you or, or the other side of the city. Is there a reason for the extra thousand, because it's, it looks like their estimate was sixty-six eight, and you're asking for sixty-eight, as opposed to sixty-seven? So I didn't know why the extra thousand. And number two, do we have to put, and this is maybe for Melissa, do these go out to bid, or is this a company specializing in this, or you get what I'm saying? I know design is a little different, Melissa, you can explain that.
Design for, for thirty-three nine M, which is most, most...
Horizontal.
...disruption, design market is exempt from...
The competitive bidding.
We picked an engineering firm that was more skilled than somebody else in structural bridges, because that's...
That's what this is.
That's what, that's what this is. You can go to any engineering firm, and they can design you a water main going down the street, but when it comes to going under a bridge, they, they, they would need to go to somebody different, so that's, that's where you're going to be in the first place.
And how about the thousand, is that just a, is this just an overs, I mean, was, can we get sixty-seven, or is it, do we need the sixty-eight, I guess is the question.
I requested the sixty-eight, figuring that, you know, usually we round them off.
I see.
You know, so...